Thank you, counsel. Okay, up next, we have roll call. Think we might be missing one. Someone could push it again. Okay, thank you.
All councilors present and a quorum has been declared.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Counselor Yan V. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, up next on our agenda, we have citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda to where when I call out your name on the card, you would come up to the podium and we ask that you speak into the mic and make your comments. Our comments section is limited to three minutes. To be fair with everyone, we cut everyone off at the three-minute mark. So I ask that you wrap up your comments within that three-minute time period. If you are still talking at the three-minute mark, I will politely ask you to end the comments at that time. Ms. Martinez, I have one comment card and it's from Mr. Philip Perry.
Good evening. My name is Philip Perry. I am also known on the street as the bear. I am also part of the Veteran and Civilian Homeless Coalition. I've been fighting for sixty-five years, off and on. I've been on the street. I am right now on the street. I'm a disabled veteran. On top of it, there's laws in this state that I've been pointed out by the police that you can't force a person to do a drug test. Well, here's a government twist. If you want to stay at Tent City, you must pass a drug test. Get rid of the drugs this way. It puts them on the street. Police are able to take care of them after ten o'clock. You get rid of it, put it back to the city. You want to know how? Eugene, Roseburg, Salem, before that bull with the drugs are okay to have so much. Now they're going back to it. The police helped. The city helped. Once you start getting rid of the drug problem and helping those that are homeless, because in five seconds, anybody in this room can be homeless. I was homeless in one. My money was gone. She took it all and I came home to nothing. One second. Like I said, homeless is an epidemic that's been going since the nineteen twenties. There's also one that people don't know about. It's called the Hoboken Law. A restaurant with cooked food that has not been served to the public must be given to the homeless. This goes all the way back to the nineteen thirties and forties during the Hoboken Coalition. This is a law that people forget. We are homeless, not because of drugs. I'm not a drug addict. I'm a recovering alcoholic and drug addict. I am also a counsel for drug addicts and abuse and everything else. I've got certificates and all. I'm not just anybody. This is a problem this town has. You're small. You're not big. How do you get rid of it? Start pushing them back to where they came from on the other side of the mountain. Don't let them come into the valley and dirty the valley up. Once you get them here, you've got the gangs. You've got the Mexican gangs. There's twenty-nine Mexican gangs already participating in this town under PISA, under OSHA. Okay? I know all these gangs. I've been around all of it. I don't just stand around. I've been in every state except for now I'm in Texas. I didn't go into because of the problem and I still don't like their problem. Colorado, I never did because of the problem, but I want to come here because the man upstairs, he said this place needs help. I've been doing it since September ninth when I came in. I met several of the people from La Puente, from AmeriCorps, and we've worked and they've seen what I do. They know what I do. I don't just think about myself. I think about my wife and everybody else. You go around town, you'll see me. This hat, camouflage.
Thank you.
All right. Y'all have a great day. I hope you really think about all of that and see something happen. Have a great day and I'll be back at another time, too.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Martinez, I don't have any other comment cards. So that we could allow people who are on Zoom to make comments during this segment, if you could give them instructions on how to raise their hand so that we could recognize them?
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for a public comment, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. And I don't see anyone raising their hand, mayor.
Okay, all right. So we'll go ahead and I don't know if staff have any follow-up to citizen comments?
Mayor, I don't. I'm sure with the information he provided, he's probably been working with our co-responders as well and we'll have open dialogue through that means.
Okay, thank you. And counsel always like to recognize our elected officials when we have some in the audience. And I see Ms. Heidi Richardson from the school board. Just want to thank you for being here and the rest of the team there as well. All righty, so that'll bring us to the next item on the agenda, ceremonial items. The first one is the proclamation for twenty-twenty-five Arbor Day. And Mayor Pro Tim Liz Hensley is going to read that proclamation.
All right, celebrate Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen-seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, Ty Coleman, mayor of the city of Alamosa, does hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five as Arbor Day in the city of Alamosa and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and urges all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this future, of this and future generations.
All right, I believe we have anyone here from the tree board that would like to say a few words? I know, I think they're on the agenda for later, but if you can come up here, we also would like to take a picture after you make a few comments.
Excuse me. So in addition to the Arbor Day proclamation, we actually have another special award this evening. Excuse me, I've been fighting some allergies. The Colorado Tree Coalition, who we're familiar with through their grant programs, where we've got numerous grants for planting trees and maintaining trees in the town. It's a statewide organization whose mission is to lead statewide efforts to preserve, renew, and enhance community forests. And part of that is recognizing citizens throughout the state and the efforts that they make in regards to community trees. One of the awards is the Distinguished Service Award. And Andy and I nominated Marilyn Lozier, who was previously on the tree board for approximately ten years, from I believe two thousand eight to twenty-eighteen, serving in all the roles from secretary to the head of the board. And also she recruited a lot of members that are currently on the board now there. So she's had a lasting impact, including also writing regular articles in the Valley Courier and starting us on the cycle of regularly applying for the grants that we've been getting. And Andy has a few words to say as well.
Good evening, counsel. If it's okay, I'd like to read the award out loud. And Marilyn, would you come up here, please, with us? The Colorado Tree Coalition Community Tree Distinguished Services Award, presented to Marilyn Lozier. In honor of Marilyn's lasting impact on the Alamosa community through her leadership on the Alamosa Tree Board pursuant of grant funding, development of educational resources like alamosatrees.net, and advocating for revisions to city code to reflect best practices in city landscaping and parking lots. Her dedication has inspired and engaged countless residents in planting and caring for trees, shaping Alamosa's tree culture for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Up next on the agenda, under ceremonial items, we have a proclamation recognizing Ms. Michelle Roubidós Wilson. And if you want to, you want to come up to the podium, if you'd like. And we're going to read the proclamation and give you an opportunity to say a few words. And then we'll come down and take a picture with you and your team down there, okay? All righty. I had the fortunate opportunity of seeing you receive this award at the elementary school a few weeks ago, and it was an honor then. All right, the proclamation and recognition of Michelle Roubidós Wilson. Whereas Michelle has been named the Colorado Distinguished Elementary Principal of the Year by Colorado Association of School Executives through a competitive process. Whereas Michelle represents not only Alamosa Elementary Three-Five, the Alamosa School District, the Alamosa Community, the San Luis Valley, but also the one thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight elementary schools across the state of Colorado. Whereas Michelle fosters a culture of learning, collaboration, and inclusivity, ensuring that every student feel valued and empowered to achieve their highest potential. Whereas Michelle's passion for education, her ability to inspire both students and staff, and her relentless pursuit of excellence have made a profound impact on our school, community, and beyond. And whereas Michelle began her years of service in August of twenty-two thousand, I'm not used to seeing two thousand, to the Alamosa School District and community as a teacher, dean of students, and an elementary principal. And whereas Michelle was born and raised in Alamosa and has lived here her entire life in the Alamosa community and is a product of the Alamosa School District. And whereas Michelle epitomized the mean-moose spirit as resilient, passionate, and puts others before self. Whereas Michelle's well-deserved recognition is a testament of her unwavering dedication, visionary leadership, and deep commitment to student success and the Alamosa community takes pride in her recognition. Now therefore, I, Ty Coleman, mayor of the city of Alamosa, and on behalf of the Alamosa City Council and staff, do hereby recognize Michelle Wilson for recognition as the twenty-twenty-five Colorado Elementary Distinguished Principal of the Year and her dedication to enriching the Alamosa community, given under my hand and seal of the city of Alamosa this April the sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Let's give a round of applause, everybody.
Thank you. That was, thank you for having me. Thank you for doing this. And thank you for allowing me to be part of this meeting. Most of all, I love being part of this community. As Mayor Ty Coleman said, I was born and raised in this community. I love this community and what I love about it is that it just, it takes all of us. And we really do embrace that as a community because we're your champions for our kids, for our students, for your neighbor, for everybody. So it is truly a privilege and an honor to receive this award and to represent who we are because there's some greatness down here and it's exciting to celebrate. I've got great colleagues, a great school district, a great school, a great admin team that believes in me and supports me and all of you. So thank you. Thank you again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to come down and present this to you and we're going to ask your team to come up here as well, okay?
Okay.
It's all good. Let's try to control. Got this.
All right. Up next, under ceremonial items, we have the introduction of new firefighters. So I'll have chief come up to the podium.
Good evening, counsel. While they aren't here tonight, I would like to recognize the following new firefighters. Jose L. Orta, Jaden Isenagla, Joseph Rivera, and also Ryan Haney. We can have all the fire apparatus in the world, all the equipment, but it's the people that actually, you know, make us a fire department. So I just, it's really good to see folks joining the organization and moving it forward.
Thank you, chief. You get to stay there for a little bit.
Okay.
All right, you get to introduce the fire explorers next.
I'd like to hand this off to Adam Lopez right now. He has been coordinating the explorer program and he'll introduce each one of them.
Thank you, chief.
Good afternoon. This year, I've got the opportunity to run the explorer program again with my partner, the Boys and Girls Club, SLB Retech, and you as the city letting me do this and help teach these guys. I've also got Esteban Alonso, who's also been my trainer a lot this year. So we've team, tag team teaching between our new recruits and as well as our explorers. So this year, I have four new explorers that are coming on this year. And then I have one repeat, who was my eighth grader last year, and he's not able to make it here tonight, but he is so excited. He wanted to do it again. So I said, let's do it. So I have Aiden Clark, who is not here. I have Elijah Stinson, if you would step up. And then I have James Hernandez, Juan Francisco, and Judah Stephens. So these are my kids that we get to go have some fun. So if you have any questions for them, feel free.
Okay, I believe mics are lit up. We start off with Counselor Yan V. Hill and then we'll follow up with Counselor Hensley.
Thank you, mayor. It's just good to see this program keep growing and maturing and these five young men, thanks for stepping up to the plate and learning the trade so early on in life. I do have to pick on this young man here at the podium. That's Elijah Swanson. He's from Center High School. He's in my government class and he's a phenomenal student. So, good job, Elijah.
Awesome. Thank you, Counselor Yan V. Hill. Counselor Hensley.
So I want, if you're open to doing it, I'd love to hear from each of you what you find so far, the biggest surprise in starting this and also what you find most exciting about it.
Yeah, so I'd say probably the biggest surprise is it's a lot more than dipping your toes in the water. We're doing a lot of hands-on classroom, just about everything that you'd normally expect. And the biggest thing I'm loving about it so far is that we're getting to kind of work with Captain Alonso right there and the recruits and kind of get to work together instead of being separate.
My name is Juan and for me, the biggest like thing that I did not expect was how important breathing was, like, because that's what Adam taught us, that breathing, like, for firefighters, like, really huge. Like, it's not just like the physical, the everything, like, the mask, the helmet, the big pants. It's also like breathing, staying calm. It's like, not just physical, but it's also like mental. Yeah.
Very good.
My name is James and the biggest surprise that I've had with this explorer program is not just how it was very physically demanding, but also mentally. One of our first hands-on trainings, we went through Fire Station Two with wax paper in our masks. And all you're relying on is just feel and listening. And once the bell on those SCBA start going off, it just makes you think more and you just got to stay calm.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Judith Stevens and the biggest surprise for me was how hot it can get. Going through all the training and just doing all that and finally being able to strip down and cool down, it's really just a nice feeling. And a big part of this for me was just meeting all the people that help this community. And I just love being here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We're going to have, we have a few more. We have a few more comments from our counsel. I have Counselor Carson and then Counselor Jackie V. Hill.
Thank you, guys. Thank the department, Adam Alonso and chief for you guys putting this on. It's awesome that you guys are giving them the opportunity. And to you guys, thank you for stepping up and learning and, you know, stepping up to help protect our community and look out for everyone in the future. It's a big deal and a lot of responsibility. And it's awesome that you guys are learning. That's really, really cool. You're being taught by some pretty awesome people. They know what they're doing. So you can't learn from any better.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Jackie V. Hill.
I just want to say welcome to the new fire explorers. And I hope your program is as exciting as it was last year when it was new for those fire explorers. And it was just an awesome program from the very beginning. So welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Jackie V. Hill. So I don't see any other lights on, so I'll just wrap up the comments section, chief. And then if you have other comments, you're more than welcome to make them. But I too would like to thank you all for joining the explorer program. This is like one of my favorite programs that the city offer because we get to get the youth involved. And in the last group that we had, I believe a large percentage of them actually became firefighters, if I'm not mistaken. Adam and Esteban, they've done a great job of making sure that you're all equipped with all the tools and everything you need to be effective and efficient and productive. So I just wish you all much success. Thank you. And then chief, if you need any other, make any other final comments?
Yes, this is an outstanding program and it will continue into the future. And also I just want to say thank you to these explorers, but also make special note as it relates to Captain Esteban Alonso and also firefighter Adam Lopez because of them taking the time on, you know, at least four hours every Sunday to work with these great young men here to make this program a success and our department a success.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, consent calendar A. Counselor Yan V. Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, just a quick note on the third item on the consent calendar. Just want to highlight that this is going with what we've wanted, what we're trying to do with housing and addressing housing. It's in our housing plan. I think that's a really cool thing that the zoning commission is working on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Yan V. Hill. We have a motion, a second, no further discussion. Okay, if we can have everyone to start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. All right. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Under regular business presentations from outside agencies, we have up first, the annual update from the La Puente Food Bank.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to step in and make, do the introduction here. You know, Wilson Hamilton is our development director, as well as Sean, who is the director of crisis prevention, is going to talk about our rental assistance program. Annalise Bear, who is unfortunately not going to be able to make it tonight, but, and so Wilson will report to her. And I'm also seeing Christina and Amy out there and Awa out there. You know, these folks came to the San Luis Valley, to Alamosa, to serve our community. And they are so smart and they're so committed and they have just brought their all. And all of them are now leaders here in our community. And it's just, it's just an unbelievable resource. So I'm going to be handing it off to them in just a second. So, you know, at La Puente, we believe that everybody needs, everybody has needs to reach their greatest potential. And at the food bank, you know, we believe that hunger is a nutrition problem, not a calorie problem, and that malnutrition can give way to mental health issues, physical health issues, and child developmental issues and success in school. So that's the importance of this right here. And then with housing instability, also can just wreak havoc on families and undermine employment, give way to addiction, just give way to a lot of family instability. And so keeping that household intact and getting them, making sure that they're not slipping through the cracks or falling flat is also really important in our community so that everybody can thrive. And these guys are the ones that are doing the work, but you are. And, uh, uh, these guys are the ones that are, are doing the work, but you offered that support to come through and help us do, help us to be able to serve more people. So I'm gonna let them talk about the numbers and the rest of the mission.
Hello. I'm Wilson. I'm the Development Director, like he said. Uh, I'm gonna talk about the food bank first, and then I'll also be up here for crisis prevention as the second item. Um, I believe I sent over just a little write-up of some of the basic stats. I'll try not to read them verbatim, but the biggest takeaways are, um, split between our Alamosa location specifically and the residents served there. And then it's pretty impossible to carve out that section from the food bank network as a whole, since it acts as both a hub for distributing food out to the outlying pantries and does serve more than just the Alamosa community, but really the whole valley. Um, over the course of twenty-four, the Alamosa location specifically served two thousand five hundred and twelve unduplicated households, comprising about six thousand unduplicated people. That means our Alamosa location serves just under fifty percent of the entire service base of the valley, uh, and of the network. Um, about twelve fifty of those were Alamosa households, so families who live here in town, uh, in the city of Alamosa, city of Alamosa proper, which makes up about fifty percent of everyone who came through the doors of the pantry, uh, and is about, you know, that's about three thousand individuals. That's about thirty percent of the whole city came through the doors of the Alamosa pantry at some point or another in twenty twenty-four. Uh, that equates to about thirty thousand boxes of food. It equates to about two hundred and seventy thousand meals as we reckon it with some back-of-the-napkin meal to food box math. Uh, and that is a sharp increase from twenty twenty-two, so it went up by about thirty-six percent. Um, those numbers are in line with increases we're seeing across the entire network. Um, our other big update in twenty twenty-four is that we were able to open our new location, as I'm sure probably everyone knows at this point. Um, we are really, really thrilled to be there. It's gotten almost uni- universally positive feedback from the clients, from the staff, from the volunteers. It has made everyone's lives easier. Uh, from the people who are coming to us for help, from the people who are getting involved in the community. It's a lower barrier to entry to volunteering because it's easier to access. It's just been an overwhelming success in our mind, and we know the city was a part of making that happen, uh, both through the facade grant and through just the whole zoning and every bit of troubleshooting that the city staff did. So it's, uh, we're really grateful for all that assistance. And this didn't technically happen in twenty twenty-four, but we're also really grateful to the city for passing on grants from a Colorado Health Foundation grant to help us buy culturally responsive foods. Uh, we walk a pretty tight line between wanting to keep as much food stocked on the shelves and wanting to keep as much nutritious food stocked on the shelves so we can, and wanting to keep as much desirable food stocked on the shelves so we can. That is tricky to navigate financially, and it's trickier when we're dealing with radically increased need. So, uh, all those additional dollars really help us keep foods that are nutritional, uh, that are calorically rich, and that are things people actually want to bring home to eat. Um, and now I'm happy to answer any questions about the food bank.
Okay. Councilor Cribbs?
Hello. Um, the thirty-six percent increase since um, the early twenties was, was surprising and, and a little sad, I have to admit. Um, when you track the location of the people where they live as they come through the doors, do you track, um, age groups? Or any other kind of demographics?
Yes, there's a, a little section in the write-up where we collect demographic information. Um, so we partial out by age groups. That includes kids. So about one in four of all the individuals, the pantry served, uh, in twenty twenty-four was a child. Uh, about one in five is a senior, so which we count as sixty-one or older. Um, about just some other demographic information to rattle off. Uh, twenty-five percent of all clients lived with, lived with a disability of some kind or another. Uh, thirty percent rely on a fixed income as their sole source of income or their primary source of income for their entire household. Uh, eighty-five percent of our clients are stably housed when they come to the pantry.
And just for council's information, I did forward the email that we received today to with this information. So if you want to dig even more into it, it's, it's in your email box.
Thank you. And, um, how does, and, and this is, um, I, I know the answer. So I'm, because we're on a, like a internet platform kind of thing, just for an explanation to people watching. Um, how does Care and Share fit into La Puente Food Bank? How does, does one help the other? Does one oversee, not oversee, but you understand?
Yeah. Yeah, Care and Share are a really wonderful partner. They've, uh, in the in the more technical world, there is a distinction between food banks and food pantries that usually doesn't get translated into day-to-day conversation. Care and Share is a food bank, which means they resource large quantities of food and distribute it in bulk to smaller pantries. Pantries are then the, uh, entity that are actually distributing food directly to people. Uh, so if you're requesting food, we're the pantry. Care and Share is the food bank. We also, we call ourselves the Food Bank Network because we do fulfill sort of a pseudo-food bank role for outlying pantries that don't have the storage or distribution capacity we do. And so we, they partner both with Care and Share and with us to manage their stores of food. But Care and Share distributes food to organizations. We distribute food to people.
Are you one of the organizations they distribute to?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Cribbs. Councilor Carson?
I just wanted to say thank you. Um, thank you, guys, for what you're doing. Thank you for utilizing that location and cleaning that area up and, and making it, um, what it is right now. It's, it's really great. I mean, you know, I, I just remember a couple of weeks before you guys started stopping there one night and, uh, you know, fast forward two months down the road, and it's just an incredible change. It really is. It's, it's really just, I think, clean that whole area up, done a lot there, and given the people that need access to that service, more access and easier access. So thank you, guys, for what you're doing. Um, keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Carson. Okay, I don't see any other lights on for this round. You're up again.
Okay.
Uh, for La Puente, uh, Crisis Prevention.
So I'm also here to talk about crisis prevention. I have with me Sean Wyland, who's our Director of Crisis Prevention, uh, who can also field questions as we go. Uh, so I'm gonna focus on the portions of crisis prevention that we partner with the city on. But the point of crisis prevention is to identify people who have achieved some level of stability and make sure that they can maintain that level of stability and take the strides forward they want to. Uh, and that can mean catching someone before they fall into homelessness, uh, just through dealing with a one missed bill or one medical payment. It can mean helping someone who's in our shelter or on the streets get back into housing. It can mean helping someone get a job. It can be any kind of supportive service that lets people identify what they know they need in their lives and help them to get there. Um, crisis prevention partners with the city in two different ways. Uh, we work through first, uh, a homeless prevention grant, which augments a variety of funding streams we have to achieve homeless prevention. Um, this past year, we used the two thousand dollar grant we received for a single household, which was a single father who'd been out of the workforce due to a pretty severe injury. Uh, he fell behind on his rent, uh, due to that injury and due to being out of the workforce. And we were able to use those City of Alamosa funds to, uh, stabilize his rent, get it to a manageable amount where he could then enter into a payment plan to cover his rest, to cover the rest of that balance. And then without that concern weighing over him, get back into the workforce. And he is now six months out from assistance, stably housed, off, off assistance, and stably employed and raising his daughter still. And that is, that is the effect of that money. It's not just writing checks to landlords. It's keeping people stable. It's letting people thrive. It's, it's really, um, allowing people to be independent and members of the community. Uh, overall, just in Alamosa, Crisis Prevention assisted fifty-two different households comprised of about one hundred and three individuals with a variety of homeless prevention funds. We receive funds from private foundations, from state grants, and from the city to achieve those goals. Uh, we've also been partnering with the Center for Restorative Programs on an eviction mediation program. That doesn't always prevent homelessness, but it does mean that if someone is leaving housing, they can do so on good terms, good terms with their landlord without having an eviction on their record. An eviction on your record in a town, in a small town with this limited housing market is a disaster for finding housing. It is a, one of the hardest barriers you'll run into. Um, so even just mediating an exit on good terms is a positive outcome for that program. But it also does mean sometimes we keep them in the house and they resolve the dispute and with a inter- with a intermediary provided by the courts and by Center for Restorative, we're able to keep that person in the housing, work through their issue. Um, City of Alamosa was also vital in funding that program specifically in its early days, uh, and was really, really important in keeping it going while we had some gaps in state funding that we have since filled in. So that was, that's another great piece of work y'all have done. Four hundred and seventy-eight households in Alamosa received at least one service from Crisis Prevention in twenty twenty-four. That's a broad variety from getting glasses to covering dental procedures to employment assists to any number of stabilizing services. Uh, our Employment Readiness Program specifically worked with just about a hundred, uh, residents of Alamosa to help them either obtain employment after they were out of the workforce or maintain their current jobs. Also occasionally advance within their field. That one's a little rarer and more of a referral program than something we handle. Um, the majority, by a lot of those clients were homeless, uh, when working with us. That represents a pretty significant shift for that program. Whereas usually that was about a fifty-fifty housed to unhoused ratio, ratio. It spiked up significantly because we are trying to target those resources to those with, uh, higher barriers to employment, primarily folks who are unsheltered, uh, or at the shelter. Um, we think that our resources are best deployed addressing the high, the employment resources are best deployed addressing those high-barrier clients and working with our more discretionary funds, uh, to stabilize folks who have other needs that can help with employment but don't necessarily need to be enrolled in that program. It's more of a, we can assist that, we can fix that problem one time. You don't need a case manager, really. Uh, so if we can divert out of that program, we will. Um, yeah, about what I got on the stats. Uh, narratively, I'll say homeless prevention funding of the kind city provided continues to be in really high demand. Uh, we are burning through that funding at a higher rate than we ever have, that I've ever seen in the six years I've been here. Um, it doesn't go as far, even though our, the average, uh, amount of assistance has not changed dramatically. It's been the rate at which we have to provide that assistance that's changed dramatically. Uh, that speaks to me of kind of a larger trend we are seeing, which is a lack of stability afforded by rental housing. Um, you know, previously rental housing for a lot of people was the highest level of stability their household was able to achieve. Um, and if that baseline that's set by being in stable rental housing is no longer uh, as high as we want it to be, it starts destabilizing other areas. If you're getting behind on your rent, you also probably cannot afford food as readily. You probably cannot maintain employment as readily. You might not be able to meet medical costs as readily. So the sort of foundational theory of resolving homelessness is getting someone into stable housing and then letting them resolve any other outstanding issues with that, uh, bedrock of housing being what's keeping them afloat as they work through other challenges. If housing and rental housing specifically is not that bedrock, um, it's a big problem. Uh, and then a brighter note to end on is after, uh, about six years of running our Employment Readiness Program, we have finally been able to achieve a partnership with Colorado's Rehire Program. We're a pass-through grantee of the, uh, Catholic Charities of Pueblo, uh, Catholic Charities of Pueblo. Rehire is intended to provide partially subs- partially and temporarily subsidized wages for people who are re-entering the workforce and are of a limited income or vulnerable household type. Uh, it is a, one of the things we have been trying to, basically since we started the program. It is a way to get, uh, employers um, comfortable with working with clients who otherwise they might look at the resume and just throw it out. But when we're able to reach out and say, you will have a case manager backing this person as they re-enter with the workforce, you will have the state financial, state finances backing this person as they re-enter the workforce. It really increases the odds of getting someone with high barriers to employment placed and productive.
Okay, all right. We have a few lights on. We have, uh, Councilor Jan V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a general question for La Puente and, um, and I think I, I should start asking this question anytime we have the outside agencies come to talk and give us updates. Is the cuts at the federal level, is that affecting you all? And and what are you doing about it?
Uh, yeah, uh, they are, um, in different ways. So one significant part of our food bank's, uh, budget in the past year and a half to two years was a program called LFA, or Local Food Purchasing Assistance Program. That was a program designed to, for, at least on our part of it, allow food pantries to purchase food directly from local producers, provided that it was minimally processed and grown or produced within four hundred miles of where we operate. Uh, it was a really valuable source of really, really high-quality food, uh, for all the pantries. Uh, that program was cut at the, at the federal level from USDA. Um, and the state had a, had a, a war, and a, an award that was pending contract execution that was then revoked, uh, which meant we will also not receive those funds. Um, we've had discussions with HUD regarding what's called the Special NOFO Grant, which is the primary grant that funds our Street Outreach Program. So far, we've been told that, that our answers to all questions were satisfactory. I don't know what that means. That's, that's what, that's the email I received. Um, and right now, of course, there is an audit ongoing at the AmeriCorps office, uh, at the national level. AmeriCorps provides twenty volunteers to our twenty to twenty-one volunteers to La Puente every year, as well as about nine folks in other rural counties around Colorado that we administer. Uh, any cuts to our ability to staff AmeriCorps positions would be pretty devastating to our ability to provide services.
Okay, I don't see any other lights on, so I'll just wrap the comments up. Sean and Wilson, thank you so very much for the presentations you, um, uh, shared with us today. A lot of good, helpful information. Really shows that the partnership that the city has with, uh, La Puente is really working well. And I want to commend the whole team over there. Um, one thing that stands out about a lot of the people who are working with La Pu- La Puente is that we have a lot of young people who are not only volunteering their time a lot, but also working. But what I like is I see you all, all the time, out and about in our community, trying to make it different and better in so many ways. Being, participating in community activities, showing up for different, uh, events. It means a lot in our community, and I know a lot of you come from other communities, but to have you here helping our community really means a lot. So thank you so very much.
And I just want to share, this is the quietest I've ever seen, Sean. I've had the pleasure of doing coffee with him a few times and-
I'm just moral support.
Oh, okay. Here's the, your muscle up there. I was just gonna point that out.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all so very much, and thank you for meeting people where they are. Makes a difference.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. All right, Council. We have a, another update from the Tree Board.
Right, we have a PowerPoint that is, uh, we're getting up and going. But one thing of significance for this year is it's the thirty-fifth anniversary of City of Alamosa being a Tree City USA. We think of that in another term, as in maybe marriage of the uh, city and the Arbor Day Foundation, or the volunteers on the Tree Board, and the dedication to the community that makes it the, uh, coral anniversary, which is appropriate with our sunrises and sunsets we get to see here. And the gift of that is jade, which is appropriate with the trees. We like to contribute to the community here. So moving ahead, uh, next slide, please. So I'm gonna roll through this with a little bit of history and a little bit of updates of what we have going on. So on average, about ninety-five Tree City USAs every, uh, year. A few don't make it every year, getting their paperwork in. Uh, most of them have been in it less than Alamosa, actually. But a few still have more than it. Uh, Colorado Springs is the oldest in the state at forty-eight years. And the Tree City USA program has been around since nineteen seventy-six, so our bicentennial of the country. So they're pretty darn close to having a hundred percent participation. Uh, next, please. So these are, once again, the requirements for the Tree City USA status. Uh, we'll roll through this with the examples. So move, next slide, please. All right. I don't expect you to be able to read this, uh, but one is the Tree Care Ordinance. So this is, uh, one of the original ordinances when, uh, Alamosa became a Tree City USA. Back then, it was a slightly different requirement. It just basically had to say, hey, you have a tree board to look after the trees. Now there's a little bit more stringent standards with that in regards to pointing to people that, uh, that have, uh, actual oversight of it. And there's some regulations in regard- And there's some regulations in regards to not just blatantly removing trees. And back to our discussion earlier with Marilyn, as she helped kind of facilitate some of these updates that we've done over the years. So the cities continue to update and modify themselves to keep them relevant and in compliance with the Tree City USA standards. Next, please. So having the tree board, and this is a list of who we have for the tree board at the moment and which wards they're in and who they're representing. We have two other tree board members, as you saw earlier this evening, that are here this also. But we also have, of course, our lovely staff here with the city. So Counselor Hensley, Andy Rice, of course, with the Parks and Rec. And then Jeremy shows up to the tree boards when he's not busy out there taking, taking care of the trees and gives his, his perspective of what he's seeing out there in the field and providing some on-the-ground advice to us. Next, please. So we have the proclamation, like was nicely read earlier today. So there was a history of them. Most, the wording has basically stayed the same over the years, but you can see where it's kind of gotten a little more formal looking over the time, but continuing to still have those, those proclamations over the years. Next, please. So here is one of the old proclamations we had at the old city hall, happens to be Marilyn and Jan there. A good media coverage of that over the years. Next, please. And of course, still celebrating and doing an event to plant trees in the community. So next, please. Once again, still celebrating and seeing some, some old staff we have in, in this picture here as well. All right, next. And getting the growth awards. So do you remember, do you know the number off the top of your head, Andy? How many growth awards the city's gotten? I'm putting him on the spot. And his tenure, they've gotten two. So that, the growth award is where the city's gone above and beyond the basic requirements to show their dedication towards the trees. And they had gotten this at their ten-year mark. So it was about two thousand when they got it. So continually working to improve and deliver benefits of trees to the community. Next, please. And then also working with educating the residents of the city. So putting on pruning workshops over the years. This is some examples of some flyers that we've done. And also it's educating the city staff to make sure they're maintaining trees properly. Next. And then on top of that, besides just being an education force for the residents of the City of Alamosa is, City of Alamosa has also sponsored the Western Colorado Community Forestry Conference twice in the last two decades, although it gets a little over two decades. So education to people beyond just the town of Alamosa and bringing people in to see this lovely city. And next. Okay, one of the big accomplishments for this year is working with Andy and the rest of the tree board to apply for a Colorado State Forest Service Inflation Reduction Act Urban and Community Forestry Grant. There's approximately two hundred thousand dollars worth of funds. And these are the locations of where we'll be planting trees with that. So a focus on more of the south side of Alamosa due to some of the parameters of the grant, and that's also where we saw the need. So look forwards to some of these plantings this year. And I hate to say it, hopefully in the future years, because back to Counselor Jan Viall's question is there's some unknowns with funding, federal funding moving forwards. Next slide, please. So this is kind of, this is a little breakdown of some of the expenses we have with us. So buying trees, doing some pruning and maintenance of trees to make them safer and more aesthetically pleasing. And then purchasing some of the supplies necessary to make sure the trees are maintained. And then also having some tree stewards to help be the voice of the community a little bit more and help look after the trees and get them more engaged, almost like the firefighter program. All right, so that brings us to this year and our celebration. So we will be doing it next Friday at two o'clock. We have a set of flyers here. You don't mind handing them out? So this is a joint effort between the City of Alamosa and the Boys and Girls Club. They were also recipients of that same grant. They're gonna be planting some at Friends Park around some of their facility and then also along Tenth Street. And as part of that, they have some tree stewards as well that are gonna help be those eyes of the trees, making sure that they're getting the water that they need. But they also are helping educate people and get them engaged and interested in the trees. He came up with this flyer for us and is gonna help recruit people for, for the event. There's currently at the Boys and Girls Club, six tree stewards that have been recruited. And so we're looking forwards to seeing you at this planting event in a little over a week. And let's see, is there another one? I think there's another one. Oh, yes. And a reminder on the Street Tree Cost Share Program that we're doing for our fourth or fifth year now. Where we've been slightly modifying this each year, but city provides up to two hundred and fifty dollars. We're seventy-five percent of the cost of a tree. So if it's a hundred and fifty-dollar tree, they're only gonna pay, what's that, eighty-seven dollars or whatever the math is? I don't know why it shows a number like that. And it's a way for us to promote and get trees in that stretch between the sidewalk and the street, increase our canopy, increase the value of the properties that they're adjacent to. And next. Oh, yes, one more event. So the San Luis Valley Great Outdoors with First Fridays, they're sponsoring the First Fridays on June sixth. And as part of that effort, they want to do some conservation education in the community. Andy and I have identified a few locations along Main where we can be planting some trees proactively before some of the other trees are removed. And so that will be part of that effort as well. So look forwards to getting some more information as that details come out. And let's see, next. So once again, congratulations on being a Tree City USA again.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. I'm gonna open it up for counsel. I see Counselor Liz Hensley have, he has her light on. And then it's gonna be Counselor Carson. And then we'll see who's next. Go ahead.
So Adam, I just want to thank you so much. I've been on this board now, I think, a few years or more. I honestly came on this board knowing very little about trees. And the passion and the amount I've learned, this, probably out of all the boards I'm on, I've learned the most and really gained a whole new respect and knowledge. And it's because of what a great board we have, the passion and all of that. So I always look at that, what we have here is the City of Alamosa's version of the Lorax, and we speak for the trees. So thank you.
Thank you for helping us.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Carson?
I wasn't gonna call you the Lorax. I just wanted to say thank you, Adam, and, and just kind of convey that I think we lose sight of how great that tree board is and how great you are in what you do and what you teach us. I, I have the, have had the pleasure of listening to Adam, like, like many of us have, talked many times. And you've educated me a ton, like, like it's insane how much I've, I've learned from you on trees. And so I'm also gonna reach out to you tomorrow about some on wildfire mitigation after a story that I gotta do. Thank you, Adam. I just wanted to say, say thank you again for everything you do.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, I don't see any other lights on, so I'll go ahead and just wrap up this segment. Adam, thank you and your team for all you do. The one thing I was impressed with was the pictures from the PowerPoint presentation showing how far back the city has been working with your organization. And I, I can only imagine how tall those trees have gotten from the first ones that you planted nearly thirty-five years ago. So thank you so very much. And thank you for making our city not only beautiful now, but also beautiful in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All righty. All right, counsel. We got a lot of public hearings and second readings. And just for the audience, just in case, it looks like we're going through these ordinances fairly quickly. It's because most of them we've already had discussions about in the past. But we'll go ahead and get started with the first public hearing and second reading for ordinance number five, two thousand and twenty-five, and ordinance amending section twenty-one dash four dash five oh four E of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to provide for security exceptions to the prohibition of razor wire fencing. My full.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're right.
Yeah, so I'll try not to put you all to sleep with fun things about fences. So this is kind of a housekeeping amendment to our land use code. We were presented with a situation where we had a critical infrastructure piece that, that needed some additional security. There's a state statute that says that you have to provide, you know, extra security for that, but our land use code doesn't allow it. And really what we did is we took a, an existing provision and just kind of tweaked it. So it gives city staff the ability to administratively allow barbed wire and razor wire fences for specific security concerns. And those specific security concerns are almost always going to be documented either in a state statute or some Department of Homeland Security guidance or something of that nature. It's not like, ah, I don't like my neighbor, so I want to put up barbed wire fence. So really, this is a, just a pretty neat, clean, tidy housekeeping ordinance. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Planning Commissioner Andy Adams for being, being here as well. So they've certainly put a lot of work into these. Thanks.
Okay, so now we're going to open up the public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number five dash two thousand and twenty-five, and ordinance amending section twenty-one dash four dash five oh four E of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Alamosa. So if we have anyone in the audience right now who would like to make any comments in regard to this ordinance, please come up to the podium and do so right now. Okay, I don't see anyone coming up to the podium. So Ms. Martinez, if you can give our audience on Zoom instruction of how to raise their hands so they can be recognized to participate in this hearing, I would appreciate it.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for this public hearing, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close this public hearing and bring it back to counsel for further discussion or comments. Counselor Jan Viall.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number five dash two thousand and twenty-five.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, don't see any lights on. Please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Public hearing and second reading of ordinance number six dash two thousand and twenty-five, and ordinance amending the Unified Development Code to establish form-based review standards and implementing those standards for certain multifamily uses.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
This is something that planning nerds get, get to geek out about. So just a quick one-on-one on zoning. You either have, we want to separate uses, so we don't want slaughterhouses next to elementary schools. Or you have, we want things to look similar and go together. So that's what form-based review is. It's a little bit more of a modern sort of planning theory. And so we were presented with a situation specifically with the Boyd School. They have nearly half an entire block that is developable. We have a barrier in our housing code that says, okay, in that specific zone, you can only have four units on the ground floor. And that, that, there is certainly some rationale for that in terms of protecting the neighborhood aesthetics. But there's also times where, you know, can we accomplish the same intent with maybe some different tools? So we put our heads together, we, we crafted these specific standards to be an off-ramp. So this doesn't replace anything that's already there. It's just an additional method of compliance. And so specifically, this would apply to multifamily uses in the established neighborhood zone, our historic zones. In the future, if this sort of process, if this framework works well, it can be expanded to other things, but that, that we can deal with down the road. But really, this is all about reducing barriers for constructing housing. The more, the more money you sink into a foundation, the more expense you have. So more walls, more expensive, and that just creates more burden for housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Deacon. So we're going to open up the public hearing for ordinance number six dash two thousand and twenty-five, and ordinance amending the Unified Development Code to establish form-based review standards. So if we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time, please come up to the podium and do so. Okay. Thought I saw one, but I guess not. We'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and go to the Zoom participants. If you would use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen, raise your hand to be recognized so that we can acknowledge you. Now would be the time to participate in this public hearing. Ms. Martinez, I don't see any hands raised.
I don't either, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and close this public hearing and bring it back to counsel. Counselor Jan Viall.
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number six dash two thousand and twenty-five.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Deacon. Up next, under police. Public hearing and second reading for ordinance number two dash two thousand and twenty-five, and ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding between Adam State University and the City of Alamosa Police Department for short-term mutual aid.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Good evening. Yeah, this is just like, this is formalizing our already working agreement that we have between the agencies and stuff. And one of the other things like a lot of these MOUs do, including the next one, is it really like if there's opportunity for grants and stuff that we can, we can show that we're working together and collaborating and stuff. So really, that's, a lot of this is cleanup stuff that we should have been doing a long time ago. And that's really all this is. I mean, we already work together really well together, so this just formalizes it.
Okay, thank you, Chief. So we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for ordinance number two dash two thousand and twenty-five, and ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding between Adam State University and the City of Alamosa Police Department. So if we have anyone in the audience who would like to come up and make any comments regarding this issue, now would be the time to do so in this public hearing, please come up to the podium. Okay, I don't see anyone coming, so we'll go ahead and go to the Zoom participants. If you would use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen to be recognized. If we see your hand raised, we will recognize you and you will be able to make comments in this public hearing. Now would be the time to do so. Ms. Martinez, once again, I don't see any hands raised.
Me either, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close this public hearing and bring it back to counsel and Counselor Jan Viall.
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number two dash two thousand and twenty-five.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? None? Okay, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. That brings us to the next item, public hearing and second reading for ordinance number three dash two thousand and twenty-five, and ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding between the United States Marshal Service and the Alamosa Police Department for support during fugitive apprehension operations.
Okay, Mayor and counsel, thank you once again. Yeah, this is the same. This here, I just wanna like make sure that there's no concerns. This here has nothing to do with immigration. I want to make that very clear. It has zero to do with that. This is strictly, has to do with when we have fugitives, like we had, we had a homicide last year where the guy fled and went into New Mexico. All this does is this allows us to work directly with, with the US Marshals, including being a part of their team. And the good thing about this is if there's an opportunity for funding or they, like seizures and stuff like that, there's, there's an opportunity that they'll give us some funding and stuff to, to do this. And again, this is, just allows us to become part of them during when we're looking for fugitives. Specifically, they have to have warrants.
Okay, thank you, Chief. So now we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for ordinance. So now we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding between the United States Marshal Service and Alamosa Police Department. Um, if we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments during this public hearing, now would be the time to come up to the podium and make your comments. Okay, I don't see anyone coming to the podium, so now we'll go back to our Zoom participants. For those of you who are on Zoom, if you would like to make comments during this public hearing, please raise your hand by using the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen to be recognized. Don't see any hands raised, Ms. Martinez.
I don't either, Mayor.
Okay, so we will close this public hearing and bring it back to Counselor Yonvi Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? No, we'll go ahead and start voting. Thank you, Chief.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right, good job, Council. We're almost halfway through them. Okay, up next on the Parks and Recreation, a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Alamosa Local Marketing District and the City of Alamosa for joint use of the city's mobile event stage.
All right, good evening again, Council. Um, this is continuing the housekeeping, uh, theme tonight. As you might recall, the marketing district helped us acquire a new stage in twenty twenty or so. And with the changing of events, like the barbecue event going away, we just needed to update the language and make it clear, they get a few free uses of the stage with this, and it's been a great partnership. So, um, you know, an IGA happens between two government entities, so if you have any questions, fire away.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll go ahead and open, open up the public hearing and bring it back to council in a few minutes. And if you all have any questions, please feel free to fire away. All right, so now we're going to open up the public hearing for ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between Alamosa Local Marketing District and the City of Alamosa. Um, if we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, uh, in this public hearing, please come and do so at this time to the podium. Okay, I don't see anyone coming to the podium. Um, so we'll go back to the Zoom participants. If you're on Zoom and you would like to make any comments in this public hearing, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen to be recognized. Ms. Martinez, I don't see any hands raised.
Neither do I.
So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to council for any comments or questions. Counselor Yonvi Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Do we have any further discussion? No? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Okay, we have, uh, the next, uh, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number eight twenty twenty-five and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Pueblo City County Library District and the City of Alamosa for a use of equipment and implementation of the PCCLD Shared Memories Project.
Okay, this is, uh, an exciting partnership with the, with the Pueblo District. They approached us after receiving a grant with some new technology that'll let us, uh, digitize old pictures, VHS cassettes, just old media stuff. And so we'll have a site here and be able to do that. And with all our history here, I'm very excited to bring this one before you.
Okay, thank you. So now we are going to open up the public hearing for ordinance number eight dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Pueblo City County Library District and the City of Alamosa. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments during this public hearing, now would be the time to do so. Please feel free to come up to the podium. Okay, I don't see anyone, um, walking up to the podium. So we'll go to our Zoom participants. For those of you who are on Zoom who would like to make any comments during this public hearing, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen to be recognized. Okay, I don't see any hands raised. And since this has been working like a real smooth all-running machine, I'm going to turn it back to Counselor Yonvi Hill.
I'm aware that Mr. Carson said that I need to get caught up because of all the online Zoom meetings I've been on. So, uh, I move on second reading that we approve ordinance number eight dash twenty twenty-five.
I second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Not, start voting.
I did have a question.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, I didn't see, I'm sorry.
So just for clarification, that means that we're going to actually get, you're going to build a lab here to do it? Like they're going to build, they're bringing the hardware, the personnel, they're, what, how's that going to work?
They're bringing something, and, and it's not a gigantic thing by any mean, but I, I don't have really good information. But they are bringing us the, the apparatus or computer or scanner or whatever it is here. And it'll stay here through twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, really, a long time.
Really cool. Good. That's awesome.
Thank you. Good question. Thank you.
And your motion carried unanimously.
Oh, thank you. Okay, that brings us down to the next item. First reading of ordinance number ten twenty twenty-five and ordinance prohibiting lone guns at all city Alamosa parks, trails, open spaces, and recreational facilities.
Thank you, Council. I believe Counselor Suisao is going to handle this one and the next one.
I am. So on this first reading, Council will recall that we had discussion, I think, about the middle of last year on a whole spate of potential park and rec rules, um, one of which was concerning deadly weapons, um, that I think we, we had at least one work session on that and maybe two, trying to think about, uh, in the whole universe of deadly weapons, are we concerned about all of them? A subset of them? Are we concerned about every facility, every trail? And we had maps out and it became all very complicated. Uh, but the, the net result of that was the council appeared interested in dealing, uh, with an ordinance focused on long guns, um, to use a colloquial term, in cities, parks, trails, open spaces, and city facilities. And so this ordinance is a, is a distillation of that discussion from last year that bans long guns on city parks, trails, open spaces, and recreation facilities. There is no good universally accepted definition of what a long gun is. And so this ordinance kind of pulled on, um, terminology used by, uh, gun groups, hunting groups, uh, other things like that, to say that a long gun is something, is a, is a firearm intended to be, uh, uh, shot with two hands from a shoulder position. Um, there's some definitions of barrel lengths, and there's a whole dispute, is it eighteen inches? Is it twenty-one inches? Do you go for the overall length of the gun? But that seemed to be kind of the, the overarching characteristic. So that's what this ordinance is, is focused around in terms of the definition.
Hey, thank you. We have a question. We're going to have some questions, so, um, thank you, Mr. Suisao. I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Carson.
Just for clarification, I just want this on the record for the public. I, I appreciate this ordinance and the way it was written. I appreciate you looking and, and figuring out that definition because it is hard to define that. Um, I do hesitate always to, um, to mess with Second Amendment rights, uh, just as, as a practice in general, but I think this is fair. Uh, and I, again, I do appreciate the way we reached a compromise and, and from where this initially started. I, I thought that was, uh, um, a little bit too restrictive. Uh, again, just, this is just for me saying it out loud. Um, sometimes we, we overregulate things. For example, last Friday, Polis signed into law a new gun here at the state, um, restricting us even further. It will do absolutely nothing except tax us for our Second Amendment right. And as a city and a city council, I'm glad that we didn't go down that choking road or that road where we, where we're overstepping, I believe in. So I appreciate that, guys. I just wanted to put that out there. I think this is a fair, um, solution for everybody involved. And as I've said before, there's no reason, I mean, you know, there's a big difference between concealed carry or, or carrying a sidearm for protection and walking around with a shotgun or a rifle on your back. I think they're both very different things. Um, if you're walking around with a shotgun or a rifle on your back in a park, like I've said before, you probably need mental help or some other, some other issue to be addressed. Um, you know, and I, I know not everybody agrees with that, but again, just putting that out there. Sometimes we overregulate. We did it again at, in the state, at the state level this Friday. And we just need to watch out for that. So, thank you, guys.
And Mayor, if I can add just a, a little bit of context, because since some of these conversations did carry over from one year to the next, to add a little context for what Council Carson was saying, a lot of that debate previously was, do we want to allow open carry? And do we want to allow concealed carry and, and all of that kind of stuff? And so all of that is still being allowed, um, not changing any regulations related to that. Um, the only item Council wanted to provide direction, as Counselor Carson pointed out, was on this long gun situation.
Okay, thank you, um, Ms. Sanchez. Um, up next, we have, uh, Counselor Yonvi Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just now, I agree with Mr. Carson. I think we had a great discussion of six months ago, and I'm ready to move on first reading and set for a public hearing on ordinance number, uh, ten dash twenty twenty-five and set it for that public hearing on May seventh at seven PM or soon thereafter.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. First reading of ordinance number eleven twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance authorizing the Director of Parks and Recreation to promulgate rules in all parks, trails, open space, and recreation facilities.
Thank you, Council. So kind of similar to the discussion in the middle of last year with, uh, a spate of potential regulations. I think there were regulations proposed on dog parks and in facilities. Um, and a lot of it got down into really nitty-gritty stuff that involves pretty much the day-to-day operation of the city facilities and how to do that smoothly, which, uh, I think is more efficiently handled by the Director of Parks and Recreation, who has the immediate feedback from his staff on what's going on and what needs to be done and, and, and what kind of regulations are applicable in each of the various facilities that the city has. What this ordinance does is allows the Director of Parks and Recreation to promulgate rules that are necessary for those operational details. Um, the charter requires that, or states that council may promulgate such rules by ordinance. This ordinance then authorizes the, uh, Parks and Rec Director to do that. It does reserve to council the, uh, scope of any rules that have to do with deadly weapons or with, uh, alcohol, tobacco, and, um, maybe not tobacco, alcohol and, uh, drugs, both illegal and recreational marijuana, uh, in city facilities. So that's, uh, still retained by council's authority to promulgate any rules there like you just did, or you just did on first reading anyway. Um, but then other rules like shirts and shoes and hours of operation and things like that, um, would be in the, in the discretion of the Parks and Rec Director.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Suisao. Counselor Yonvi Hill?
Yeah, I have a question. Um. So you kind of, you kind of talked about it, Eric, is like the, the big stuff that could come up, we would, it would come to council. Um, right?
Yeah, and I, well, yes, specifically deadly weapons, alcohol, and drugs.
Yep.
Those would come to council. Uh, other people may have different definitions of big stuff. So in, to some extent, you're, this ordinance doesn't say big stuff comes to council. You would be relying on the discretion of the Parks and Rec Director and the city manager to look at some rule that the Parks Director might want to promulgate and say, ooh, wait a minute, this is really something that council ought to weigh in on. And I, I can't envision a situation where you have hired a city manager who wouldn't be sensitive to that kind of things, but that, that is a risk. Because all it does specifically carve out right now is, is, uh, weapons and, and alcohol.
Thank you. Counselor Carson?
Um, but just for clarity, just for clarity, as with most things in the charter, if we do have issue or take issue, our situation if need be.
Yeah, right. You could, uh, uh, do another ordinance that says something that is directly counter to a rule that the Parks Director promulgated, and your ordinance would, would supersede that.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Okay, Counselor Yonvi Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve on first reading ordinance number eleven dash twenty twenty-five and set it for a public hearing at seven PM or soon thereafter. On May seventh, sorry. And I said the wrong ordinance, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number eleven.
It is?
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
Good, good.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, that brings us to the next, uh, public hearing. Looks like, uh, public hearing and second reading for ordinance number nine dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance amending the composition of the Historical Preservation Advisory Committee to add a young, I'm sorry, to add a voting youth representative position.
Hey, so Council, this is exactly like the ordinance you just read states. You're just adding a youth position, which is a voting member to the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. Um, this is the one committee that has, was created by ordinance, so we have to do it by ordinance.
Okay. Do, uh, go ahead. Um, I tell you what, how about, how about we, uh, go through the public hearing and then, would that work? And then we can get, is that good? Okay, I will try it. Okay, what we're going to do, since this is, we'll go ahead and open up the, uh, public hearing for ordinance number nine dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance amending the composition of the Historical Preservation Advisory Committee to add a voting youth representative position. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, uh, at this time, you're more than welcome to come up to the podium and make any comments. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, so we'll go ahead and go to Zoom. If there are any Zoom participants who would like to make any comments in this public hearing, please raise your hand by using the raise your hand feature, um, at the bottom of your screen to be recognized, recognized. Okay, I don't see any hands raised, Ms. Martinez.
Me either.
Okay, so we'll turn it over to, uh, Counselor Hensley.
I do, I have a question. Um, I had mentioned at one of my other boards that this was happening. So it's not directly to this, but somebody did bring up, they weren't sure that people.
Go ahead.
So you already know where we're going with this?
We already answered the question, and I think he forgot. So youth can be on our advisory boards. There is a state thing that limits it as it relates to nonprofit boards, but there is no such thing from a local government board.
Thank you. Should I finish it so people know what I was talking about? So, so what it came up was, could they be a voting member of a board? So that, thank you for the clarification, uh, because that person would have been a nonprofit, so that made sense. Thank you.
Okay, all right, Counselor Yonvi Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number nine dash twenty twenty-five.
Okay. I'll second. We have a motion and a second, and I, I just have a little bit of discussion. I am really happy about this because oftentimes when we see youth in the community, a lot of them really don't know what we do or how the city is ran. And, um, if we just look at all of our advisory boards, most of the people who come to be on those boards are people who are been, uh, around life for a while. That's my last way of saying it. Um, so it's good to have that input and feedback from the younger generation. It just brings so much positive energy, so I'm really excited about that. from the younger generation. It just brings so much positive energy. So I'm really excited about this. Really excited. So those are my comments. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Good, let's start voting. All right.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're getting on down the road here on this agenda for tonight. Committee reports. We have any committee report. Counselor Hensley, then Counselor Krebs.
All right, so I'll start off with the rec board. Just real briefly, switching over from winter to summer. So obviously, things are really picking up. Had a great ice season. One of the highlights was there was three free skate nights for youth, and over six hundred kids participated in that, which I thought was really cool. Obviously, lots of different different things going on for the summer and, and the softball, all that type of stuff. But one thing also is there is a new youth pickleball. I thought that was pretty hard. We're gonna, just like on our committees, we're gonna start them young. So that's sort of the highlights of the rec board. I also had the tourism board, Visit Alamosa. And so First Fridays are starting up again on May second. Super excited. The focus on this is going to be games. It's going to be very engaging. People are excited to have First Friday start again. So that's going to be obviously going and really good. They did finish the resident sentiment survey. Thanks for everybody for participating. They had a really good response rate, which was phenomenal. So they went over some of that. We love our National Park Campaign has been going, and so excited things. I'm sure you've seen the flags there. And then Salamar is the organization that is working on the Steering Committee. We're gonna put together a strategic plan for Visit Alamosa as well, and it's been great working with them. So that's that. I did also participate this last week in the Main Street Committee. Honestly, overall, nothing major in regards to things that we haven't already discussed in the past, but obviously also getting ready for spring and summer. People are doing quite a bit of hiring, so they're ready, and spring has already started off pretty strong. So good news there.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Good job, good job. And Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. I went to the meeting of the Alamosa Housing Authority, and it was my very first one. So it was a learning curve and a half, but I really enjoyed it because I got to learn a lot about what they do. And for them, also, spring has sprung, and they're starting to do some outside renovations. They were able to get the Rio Grande parking area paved, and they're working now to widen a concrete sidewalk to meet ADA standards for one of their tenants. So, good meeting.
Awesome, and thank you for joining that board. Appreciate that. Okay. Now, that brings us to staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few quick ones. Alamosa Creates is continuing their public outreach to get input on what the creative district should look like and, and what people are interested in seeing. Their next public meeting is Tuesday, April twenty ninth at five o'clock at the Boys and Girls Club. I also just wanted to give a shout out to Holly and her team. I feel like we had an amazing board appreciation dinner. I feel like every year, they really take any feedback. They ask questions. How can we make it better? And it just keeps getting better and better. I think we had awesome attendance from Council as well as filling the room with people that love our community. And it was, it was neat to listen to the speeches, because for each advisory board, it's filled with people who are so passionate about that one area and may have no passion at all for some of the other areas. So it's, it was just really interesting to see some of the, the nooks of, of where people's passions and how far it can take things. And so just want to give a shout out to Holly and her team. A reminder that Lexi has sent some emails. If you haven't replied, we need headcounts for the C M L dinners as well as if you're bringing a guest to the retreat in June. So if you have not replied yet, please do, because we want to get that worked on. And then prior to the meeting, Counselor Jackie V Hill shared with me that she received phishing email that seemed to be coming from the mayor, asking her to buy some gift cards. This is obviously not true. If you get those, I don't know if you can do it on your phone, but I know on your computer, when you open your Gmail, there's a little hook for phishing that you can send that email into Phishing World type of thing. Just don't ever click on any links or anything like that when you get those emails. They're not real. The mayor does not need any gift cards, so.
I don't. And, and I don't look good in orange, so.
I do need gift cards.
Alrighty, thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Sanchez. All right, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, local liquor licensing actions.
It's gonna be Eric.
Oh, it's Eric.
You can come on up.
So usually you turn that over to me to conduct the public hearing portion, but I'll conduct the beginning of it as well. And I see Jason Gonzalez heading to the podium, who is the owner and manager of Lucius Tacos, Tequilas, and Taps. Just Mr. Gonzalez, the, the format here is you can make an introduction to Council about what your business is and, and what you're looking for for the liquor license. We will then have a public hearing where the public can comment on whether they're, they think there's a need or desire for a license in that neighborhood. I will turn it back to you for a response after that, and then it'll go to Council to discuss.
Sounds great. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you for letting me be here. So do you want me to start out with an introduction as well? Is that, okay. I know some of you, but I'm Jason Gonzalez. What I'm doing is opening up a place that I wanted to be kind of, I guess, first and foremost, I'm, I'm trying to be a part of bettering Alamosa. I mean, I've been here forty five years, and I'm only forty five years old. So I love this town. I try to give back to this town just as much as I can, and you know, I just want to make someplace that's, it's a fun place, a family friendly place, someplace that is a little different than what we have everywhere. When you hear tacos, you think, you know, you can have tacos anywhere and whatever, but my bar manager, he fifteen years experience. He comes from San Diego. He's originally from here. He's an award winning craft cocktail bartender. What this guy does is pretty amazing. And so it's something that you know, you can go anywhere here in town and get these things, but he's bringing something that's a little special to what we're doing. One part of me is I come from a law enforcement background of ten years. I know the, I know that alcohol is one of those things that, you know, you do it responsibly, and it's okay, you know, as an adult. I mean, I'm gonna bring a place that will, I will govern. I will make sure it's done responsibly. I'm not looking to bring a place to town that's just, you know, a big party scene. Realistically, the reason for me bringing this is, number one, like I said, I want to contribute to this town and make it a good place and but I do what I do for my kids. I have a daughter graduates now here at the N M A. Her plan is to go up to dental school, and I have another business here in town as well, and, you know, I sacrifice my spare time for that. I work full time for Xcel Energy now. I run gas emergency response. And I just kind of want to keep contributing to this town as much as I possibly can. I want to do an outdoor area here. Nice contained area. I want outdoor activities. That's one thing that I wish we had here, you know, myself personally. Kind of want to make it to where people are coming down, they're able to kind of feel like they're at their buddy's barbecue, you know, and a nice friendly environment. I'm occupying five thirty one Edison, that I'm trying to bring life to a building that is kind of a rather large building that's on a busy part of our town. I've been out there working for a little over two months, pouring my heart and soul into that place. I'm rather excited for people to see what I've done. It's coming along real nice, you know. Outside of that, I mean, that's really all I got.
Mr. Gonzalez, I understand the property was posted on March thirteenth with the notice of application for the liquor license and has been posted until today. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a copy of the poster? Okay, we'll, we'll get that, but then we'll, we'll call that Exhibit A. Did, did you get any petitions or anything like that?
Yes, I didn't get a ton of them, but I did pull a couple pages worth. I've been rather busy trying to working on the place, and then my job unfortunately is a little bit more than just forty hours sometimes. And so I have one out. I have received several pages worth. I did bring them with me as well. Not much that I would have liked to have.
We'll call that Exhibit B. How many, how many signatures are on there?
Fifty eight.
Fifty eight. And if you would, then bring the poster over to here to Holly and then pass Counselor Jackie V Hill the petition so that Council, Council can circulate that. And then were you done? Are we ready for the public hearing?
Um, yeah, I mean, that's really, that's really my, my cause. And so.
Very good. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing, and you can go ahead and have a seat. Anybody wishing to speak as to the needs and desires of the neighborhood and your perspective for a liquor license at this, at this outlet, please come up and do so. Nobody in Council chambers is coming forward to speak, so anybody wanting to speak on Zoom, if you use the raise your hand function, we will see that and allow you to speak to this public hearing. And there's nobody on Zoom either. So, Mr. Gonzalez, if you want to come up again, Council probably has some questions for you. They typically do. I'll close the public hearing.
I had a question, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, sir.
Is this building still right now being used as like a swap meet or?
No, once I occupied it, it's been, what do I, end of February, that closed down, and it's solely been mine now.
Thank you. And then do you own now like, I have it pulled up here on my computer, but the whole half block, is that all owned by you or just the building itself?
I got the building, and then the agreement was if you can vision it along the fence line to the north, there's a concrete slab, that concrete slab out approximately about twenty feet, and then to the fence that closes in that property.
Thank you, sir.
My question is, while you talked about having different activities outside, like at a barbecue, what are you specifically talking about?
I want to bring a cornhole, just, you know, things that are, like, for as much as I'd love to bring horseshoes, because I love horseshoes. I don't feel like having objects that can be thrown around that are in that store, but just things such as that. We are gonna do, as far as our plans is, I want to do weekly entertainment or every weekend. I have intentions on doing a three month calendar of events. Once we get going, bringing in comedians. I've been working with Comedy Works out of Denver, booking local talent, Jeremy Alonso. He's already agreed to perform the opening week, and so my neighbor Matt Hardisty, he's a musician that's been dying to perform all over Alamosa, and said he hasn't really had much of an opportunity. And so just kind of want to bring as much fun and entertainment as I can. Just down the street, we have the RV park. I mean, this town's great for tourism. It's awesome. I mean, I, I love seeing the increase in business down here and people that come through, and the sanding really brings a lot to this valley and with that hotel coming, you know, it's gonna be two years, but downtown's popping already, and just bringing more activities for the downtown and having a nice place for hotel visitors to be able to walk to and walk back. The RV park, same thing, you know, those guys, I see them walking all day long. In the evenings, they're crossing the tracks and give them a place to go. Let them enjoy Alamosa, give them an experience, and bring revenue to the city. I mean, we need it. I mean, this town's growing. I mean, you guys know this. I mean, this is what you guys do day in and day out.
Sounds exciting.
Yeah, I love it.
Back to you, Mayor. I'm out.
Oh, you're out now?
Close.
Yeah, all yours. Thank you. I'm it. All right, here we go. Up next?
I have a comment.
Yes. I was gonna, I was gonna go in the order real quick with you. Then we'll go with Counselor Krebs, Counselor Carson, and then Counselor Hensley.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'm, I'm very excited for this. I, I can never get enough of, of different tacos, and we won't even mention the tequila. But I was curious, with that large of an outside patio area, and you did mention it briefly, live music, something of that nature. Do you have you, you do have a limited parking. Did you have an agreement with the bank possibly for them?
So the good thing about this area is that I have a rather large parking lot in the, in, on the, on the parking grounds there. Across the street, we do have our nice public parking lot that the good thing about that parking lot is it does not get a lot of, not a lot of people park there, you know. Summertime, we do have the farmer's market. Outside of the farmer's market, that does not get a lot of activity. There has been a food truck that's been parked there, you know, and that's, it's been nice to see cars there, but there's a lot of parking over there. And that's the good thing is down Edison, you have, I would not have to utilize the bank parking lot, I would not believe. I mean, per capacity, I mean, there's plenty of parking that goes on both sides of Edison, as well as the public parking, as well as my parking lot that's on the property. The other thing that excites me, to be honest, as well is the two months that I've been over there working, the cars that are charging at the Tesla charging stations, they're there. If I'm there till midnight, there's gonna be a car, at least one over there. I've learned something with people with electric cars, and they like to travel with their dogs. And so watching them come and go and get out and walk their dogs around. I'm gonna give a little front area in the front for them to bring their dogs and put the little dog bowl out and a water dish, and I want to put a little seating area that's facing the Tesla charging stations with seating for about six out there, so people can maybe come and grab a bite to eat and watch their car charge and also feel safe. I've talked to people that are across the street, I kind of waited until there's at least two cars in the parking lot, so I don't go creeping anyone out over there, but just kind of mentioned to them like, hey, you know, there's a place available over here. Would you rather sit in your car, or would you rather come over here and grab a bite to eat, or? And it's kind of, people say there's nothing worse than sitting there waiting for your car to charge. And so if we can get, if I can give a place to go that somebody, a lot of old people, you know, as well, can come across the street and wait, feel safe, instead of sitting in a parking lot at ten o'clock at night, nine o'clock at night. That's another kind of thing that's exciting me as well is.
Well, thank you for, I can tell your passion. I can tell you've thought this through. So thank you so much for bringing it to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs, Counselor Carson, then Counselor Hensley, then Counselor Dominguez.
Uh, Jason, I think this is a great idea. I have confidence that you'll do everything the right way and that you'll run a tight ship. I had more of a weird question that might involve Counselor V Hill. Is that building on the H pack? And if it's not, why not? Because I'm sure it had some sort of significance right there by the tracks. I don't know how old it is, but I would look into that. That building's been around a long time. And where it's at, it's had to, it had to have had some, some kind of public railroad significance or something. So it's just something to think about. I'd be thinking about that. Good, good, good spot, and sounds like you've got some great ideas. And I didn't even think about the Tesla charging station. That's awesome. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson, Counselor Hensley, Hensley, and then Counselor Dominguez.
So Jason, I agree. I think this is fantastic. I love the idea of having some activities. And it feels that, that type of thing where it's comfortable, families can go. It's, so I think it's great. My question is, and I obviously have a lot of background in restaurants and bars and things like that, is I assume you have some sort of plan for training your staff in regards to
is I assume you have some sort of plan for training your staff in regards to, uh, responsible serving, et cetera?
That's correct. Um, I'll touch on that. I own El Hepez. That's on State Street. Um, I have been visited a lot by the state ATF as well. Um, I pass with flying colors every time. My staff is, they know that I don't mess around. Um, bringing something like that to town, it's got a little bit of a negativity to it, but you know what, as adults, I mean, you're entitled to, you know, to dwell and enjoy what you choose to enjoy, as long as it's legal. Um, but on that note, I mean, is there a problem with it with the youth? There is. Isn't something, I combat myself very much so. Um, my staff, I mean, anybody can walk in at any moment and, um, we are twenty-one and over for a reason, because if you're not twenty-one or over, you have no business being in there. Um, we check every ID, no matter, and some people don't like it, um, you know, because they come in, they say, you know me, I was just here yesterday. I know, but, you know. So, yes, training, yes. I mean, one hundred percent. Going back to my bar manager, um, he coming out of San Diego, I mean, he's the same way. He says, you know, I mean, um, he's worked in both family-friendly and twenty-one and over. And he said, you know, it's just, you, you, it's the importance of making sure that your staff treats it, you know, the way it should be treated is very important. So, no, we will definitely, everybody that works for me will know where I stand. And I think for the people that do know me, they know that I'm not out to make a buck. I'm out to, you know, do things the right way and and everything I do, I pour my all into it. And so I, I'm not gonna let anybody put my butt on the line, so.
Awesome. Thank you. And again, I, this does sound great, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Dominguez, I admire your entrepreneurship.
I, you're, you're a big inspiration of mine, Jamie, so.
Well, well, then I'll, I'll keep my restaurant comments to myself. But I know the inter- when I heard you were doing this, I was like, yes, it's a block away from my office. Like, I'll, I'll walk down the street to get some tacos. Hopefully them tacos are different, like the entertainment, you know, all these, there's too many tacos that are the same around here. But I think you have a strategy, if I heard right, that is, they're gonna be different, so.
You're gonna have El Pastore off the spit finally in the valley, so.
Good.
For if you guys that don't know what that is, if you've ever seen the meat being cooked on the rotating assembly, being shaved off, that is El Pastore off the spit. So.
We're excited and I, I know you'll do good, so, good luck on your ventures and I can't wait.
Counselor, um, Yan V. Hill?
Mayor, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Easy.
So, um, I move that we approve a tavern license for Luchas Tacos and Tequilas and Taps LLC DBA.
Luchas, that's correct, yes.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, and, and I just wanted to make a, a, a comment under discussion. Jason, um, I've been knowing you for several years and you, you, you have that entrepreneur vibe like, uh, Councilman Dominguez mentioned. Um, from what I've seen and the work that you've done and from promoting, um, fighting events and your other businesses, you, you've always poured your whole heart and soul into it. I'm quite sure you're gonna do the same thing in this business venture. I just have a question for you. Are you the one that did the improvements to the exterior of those buildings that's been like, um, abandoned for a while?
The ones in the back?
Yeah.
No, um, the, the owner of the property did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it, it does look a lot better driving down that street, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just really glad to see that.
Yeah, no, I will continue to clean up the outside as well. And so it'll, it's more improvements to come, so.
Okay, well, thank you and we, we wish you much success.
And I didn't touch on that, but I also have gotten about, I think it's been seventeen liquor licenses that have been just temporary over the last twenty-one years and so everything's went smooth. So let's see if, uh, long-term we'll continue that, so.
James, well, thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. No further discussion. Please start voting. Okay?
The motion carried unanimously.
And council, I, I will, uh, bring draft written findings for your review at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the last item on the agenda tonight, council comments. Do we have any council comments? Counselor Carson?
So I, I, this is, uh, just something to get off, get out of the way so I don't forget tomorrow, Heather. I, I was just approached by somebody, Andy, uh, that um, uses the dog park that said if we would please repair the fence because now the dogs get out. I'm not really sure.
Was it the dog park out at the pond area?
Pond area, that there was a fence that went all the way to the end and it's been damaged or something, and now the dogs can escape and get out. So, yeah, they, they just approached me, so I figured I would do that, because if not, I'll forget tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, I just wanna echo, um, the sentiment. It was a wonderful appreciation dinner, so thank you for throwing it. And I think all the people, um, that attended were enjoying it. Um, I was, one of the things that was brought up as a side thing at the housing meeting was, um, the one, the ditch that was filled with litter. And as soon as the city heard about it, we moved and we cleaned it up. So, um, just kudos to that team. They're usually, um, not acknowledged very often for their hard work and it looks wonderful. So I just wanted to make a point to, to thank them for, um, the speediness of it and just their hard work putting into it. So.
Thank you. And that was our street crew. We do have the agreement with the ditch owner that for them to allow us to discharge some of our stormwater into it, um, that, that we do maintain it. Usually we try to do it at the end of March before irrigation season starts, because I don't know if you saw any of the pictures, but having to get in there when there's water in there and get it out is a lot harder. Somehow the ditch owner managed to run water before ditch season opened, so it made it a little more interesting this year. So I just really wanna thank our street crew for, um, having it be even a, a more interesting year.
Thank you. Then any other comments? Okay, I just, I'll wrap things up. Um, I too would like to thank Holly and her team for putting on a fantastic, uh, appreciation dinner. Um, I had, I received several comments and compliments from people who were so thankful for the venue, uh, the knee-knockers and the, the food. And, uh, also, um, the, the, the dessert was really delicious. Um, Roy could attest to that as well. Uh, and, and, and also wanna thank city council. Each one of you all participated and did a great job, um, share, sharing your appreciation uh, with everyone there. And that really makes a difference in their lives. So thank you all for doing such a great work as well. That's all I have. So if we don't have any further business, this meeting is adjourned. Good job, everybody.